Good afternoon. The June 9th of -- the June 9th meeting of the Evanston City Council returns from its executive session. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Isles.
Present.
Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Saffordan.
Here.
Councilmember Davis will be back shortly. Councilmember Rogers.
Here.
Councilmember Hadda Kharis.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
And Councilmember Harris will also be back shortly. Mayor Abyss.
Here. We have a quorum and are prepared to continue with our work. Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report, I am Brad Cole, CEO of the Illinois Municipal League. We did just conduct a closed-session discussion that's allowed under the exceptions for closed session of the Illinois Open Meetings Act 5I OCS 122(c)(16), which allows for discussion of practices and procedures, self-evaluation, and professional ethics of the public body when meeting with a representative of a statewide organization for which the public body is a member. The city of Evanston is a member of the Illinois Municipal League. As I indicated, I'm the CEO of the Illinois Municipal League, and we did conduct that meeting. There was no action taken, there was no business to be done in the closed session, so nothing to be reported here. Just wanted to thank the mayor and the council for allowing me to come here and be with you today, and appreciate the opportunity to serve you as the Illinois Municipal League. If you need something else from us, let us know. Have a good meeting.
Thank you for your help, Mr. Cole, and we wish you safe travels to McLean County. Clerk, please add Councilmember Davis to the roll. And Harris. Everyone's back. Okay. So for the next 54 minutes or fewer, 53, I guess, we are -- I would -- we're going to discuss city council goals. As a reminder, for those who went through it, and a point of information for those who didn't, this, the 81st city council was, I think it's fair to say, sluggish in establishing city council goals. It happened really, you know, basically more than halfway through the four-year term. That is not the best way to run a railroad, and so what we are endeavoring to do with this council is to be much more swift so that we can move on to the more important work of executing against those goals. So we have, so the city manager sent to all of council, for everyone's memory refresh, the existing city council goals that were established back in 2023. They're formatted in six big topics: affordable housing, climate action and resiliency, economic development, finance, public health, and public safety. And what I would like us to do during the course of this session is to establish a determination of those high-level goals, whatever they may be, for the 82nd city council, and then direct staff to, as needed, update the specific bullets that are enumerated under those goals. And so I would really ask us to conduct this conversation with an expectation that by the end of it, we'll be able to send staff away with those, let's say, six, um, six goals, which I'm certain will have significant overlap with the existing ones, which is part of why I think it's very reasonable to have this conversation over the course of a single hour. So I don't know if Luke or Allison have anything to add to that?
No, thank you, Mayor, for that overview. I would just add, I think in a previous Rules Committee discussion, we discussed the concept of, once the council goals are officially approved, staff will then work on a work plan. We would come back within 30 days to share that work plan with the city council, and then we would issue quarterly updates on that work plan.
Thank you very much. So I'm actually just going to open it at this time. Is there anybody on council who wants to speak, you know, particularly who wants to propose a specific change from the existing topics? Councilmember Saffordan, followed by Hadda Kharis.
Yeah, there's, we need to include something about parks and infrastructure. We have significant needs in parks and infrastructure. They're well documented. We can put a measurable dent into those if we commit to that. That's all I got.
So wants, requests to add something about parks and infrastructure to the list. Councilmember Hadda Kharis, followed by Nusma.
So I have one question for Director Flax, because I know we've had discussions around affordable housing and HCDC, and I just want some clarity about, around some potential goals. So I think if we're setting, like, would this be goals through 2029, then? So I think, if I'm not mistaken, we had, is it 400 people on the waitlist for affordable units with SEPA? Or was it three? It was either 300 or 400? Yeah.
Is it okay if we stay at the top level really quick for the six top ones, and then we can get into, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. And I just, two things really quickly. I want to say it doesn't have to be six, it can be fewer than six. I'd recommend not going above six. That kind of makes it so that, like, if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. So just want to throw those two things out.
So I guess I would like, as we move forward, to have a, have a more ambitious goal around the number of affordable units. We can, I think, also add, as far as affordable housing, I think we should have, like, it had been some time since we had updated and amended the inclusionary housing ordinance, and I think that should be, we should set a review period for that, just so that we're checking in and, you know, making sure that we're doing all we can. And then I, I guess we should also find, kind of along those same lines, when we say, like, identify new sources for rental assistance, I think we should have a goal, like a monetary goal, kind of similar to when we say identify alternative revenue sources, I think we should be looking at setting a monetary goal for that going forward, rather than just having a broad, more in the language. So I'll look at that.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm hearing what Ms. Leibsinger says about six being maybe the maximum, so we're going to have to make some, some calls here. There's one high-level goal or priority that I would like to add to the list, which I will just call operational excellence. There might be a better term for it, a better phrase. I'm certainly not married to the, to the term, but what I'm talking about here is the internal day-to-day workings of the city that are kind of fundamentally important to the community. Customer service, I think, is one manifestation in previous council goals, going back, I think, two councils ago, they called it customer service. So what I have in mind includes that, might not be limited to customer service. Talk about process management, I'm talking about employee engagement, and any number of other, you know, kind of definable operational metrics that we need to be mindful of. So I would like to see that added to the high-level goals and priorities list. I want to make sure we keep climate action on the list. That one is particularly important to me, and I would argue is very important to everybody. If we are going to have to pare this list down, that would be a tough call to make, but public health, as extremely important as it is, is maybe something that could come off of this highest-level list. And I'm saying that, being very mindful of the huge discrepancy in life expectancy between different census tracts in Evanston. Like, it's, it's shameful, and something that definitely needs to be addressed, but as far as this overwhelming city council goal or priority, maybe that one could come off the list or be recombined with something else if we want to keep the concepts there.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, I was going to say something similar to Nusma. As I'm looking at public health, what I think maybe strikes me is that, when I think about the order of priorities, I put housing above public health. And so, and many of the issues that we have in here, I feel as though they are, like, intertwined with other things. So like, when we talk about enhance and modify assistance programs to provide the growing need for vulnerable populations, and reduction in emergency room visits related to persons experiencing homelessness, like, I would like to address the homelessness first, before we get into the one-off of people occasionally being in emergency rooms, given that, like, one is a continuous issue. I think that the mental health first aid aspect, which is like, maybe six or seven bullets down, I'd roll into public safety. And then increasing bike ability, I'd roll into climate action. And then, you know, with a couple of these other things, I think that they might not be enough to warrant an entire, I guess, like, category of their own. And some of them, I also don't think that, when we talk about the division of policy between municipal, state, and federal, it seems more something that we'd expect to happen on the state and federal level, as opposed to us reasonably being able to make a significant dent on the municipal level. So I wonder about, like, what actual goals we were planning to do and how we intend to implement some of these things.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, and so I'll go back to Councilmember Hadda Kharis and acknowledge what's going on behind the curtain here, which is that I'm using the timer, but then not making notes of how much time folks have taken. So, okay. Use the extraordinary power you're being given judiciously, please.
You know, I'm really, usually, really long-winded. So Councilmember Nusma, I like your suggestion around operational excellence, and I do get that we have, we shouldn't, we're going to try to keep this at six or less. If you were being minimal to do this, I think operational excellence could fit under finance, just kind of, when, looking at it as, are we doing the most with the money we're spending to provide services? I think efficiency, organizational efficiency definitely goes hand-in-hand with finance, and if we're getting the most return on investment that we can. So I don't know if that's something you'd be up for, so.
I'm open to whatever makes sense of, I'm reading the four bullets under the finance goal, and those, eh, to me, that would be a stretch to squeeze them into what I'm envisioning under operational excellence. It occurred to me that maybe there's some overlap between economic development and finance, because we're talking about money in both cases, but maybe that's the only, the only connection. So I'm happy to keep talking, I don't want to rule anything out at this point.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Rogers.
Yeah, I remember, recall us getting a little stuck on the categories, the broad categories before. I mean, thinking about this now, I mean, maybe the number of broad categories doesn't matter as much as how many bullet points. And so I'd be fine adding two additional broad categories, whatever, but then let's talk about what those action items are, and maybe limit those per category. I think that's probably a better way to, to manage time, and then we don't have to get stuck on trying to figure out what we need to consolidate.
Councilmember Rogers.
Thank you. I would just say that I think it's important for us to keep in mind that just because something doesn't make city council goals lists, doesn't mean it's not a goal for the city. So if things are removed, it's not that we're deprioritizing them, they're just not one of the things that we are putting on our list, because each department is going to have their own goals for the year, for the, for the, I'm guessing you could do years for the, for the staff, as opposed to council terms. And so just because something doesn't make it here, doesn't mean that it isn't something the city is prioritizing, it's just something that isn't making the very top list that council is focused in on for this period of time.
Again, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Burns.
I don't think we've ever discussed that. I was actually going to say that the last time, because I remember, I recall people saying stuff like that. I think we have to figure that out collectively, like, what is the point of this? Why are we doing this exercise? How is it going to be used? Who's going to be responsible? I think we know that question, but, and I don't know if we can have that conference, if we can wing that. I think that's honestly the reason why it's sometimes helpful to have somebody that has thought about this before the meeting, to help facilitate these discussions, because that, that to me is the most important thing, is like, what, why are we doing this? How is this going to be used to prioritize, you know, different tasks and what staff works on? Because if it's not doing that, then I think we're just, we might be wasting a bit of time, honestly.
I do want to mention two things. I just sent the link to the webpage on the city website. In addition to the goals, we have a mission statement, a vision statement, and organizational values. And under organizational values, we have things like excellent customer service, continuous improvement, integrity, and accountability. And then Councilmember Burns, to your point, you know, I had mentioned a few minutes ago about developing a work plan that's based off council goals. We would bring that back on a quarterly basis, so we're reporting to the council and the community of us acting on those council goals. But to the point, like, for example, like Director Thompson, there's not a whole lot of stuff necessarily in here that's parks and rec, but obviously, we're doing stuff every day, every week, and we have departmental goals for parks and rec, even if it's not directly reflected in the council goal document.
And just as a quick follow-up, if I can, and so the stuff we put here, this is, in terms of how you're going to use staff time, these things will be prioritized over everything else?
Correct. Correct.
Still, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Davis.
In addition to that, I spoke with Luke, and I requested that, once we set these goals, we separate out our discretionary and nondiscretionary spending. So nondiscretionary being things that we could get sued over not doing, like maintaining sidewalks. And then use these goals to determine what budgets are. So when we talk about if we're going to spend $3 million on a park, or if we're going to talk about whether or not, how much money we're going to allocate to incentivizing affordable housing, we have some semblance of a budget, instead of pretending as if we have a money machine. So, and I do still really insist that we do that or consider doing it. And Luke mentioned that it might be a possibility after staff does budgeting over the summer to actually allocate some numbers behind our goals.
Still, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Rogers.
Councilmember Davis stole what I was going to say, which is, I think our goals should really focus in on where we're prioritizing our dollars. All staff is important, the work that each staff member does is important, but we have limited budgets, and we sort of need to determine where we feel we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck in prioritizing those things. So I think that would be a, a good lens to use when we're talking about these things, because some things are, are policy things, and those kind of exist out there already, and they're already kind of priorities. But I think if we're talking about keeping an eye on where we're going to spend our dollars and where our budget money goes, I think that's really where we should kind of focus.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first or second time, so we go back to Councilmember Davis.
I'm going to also say that, like, I would like the other council members to think, if you're thinking about adding something, I would advise that it be so important that you're willing to raise property taxes over it. Like, if that gives you some sense of how important you should consider, like, our core goals to be.
Still, no one requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Nusma for a second time.
Upon further reflection of Councilmember Hadda Kharis's suggestion regarding the finance goals, I do think maybe those finance goals could be worked into an operational excellence goal. So that might be one way to keep things a little bit simpler. And I like what Councilmember Davis was saying about redistributing the public health bullet points into other areas of, of the goals. So making progress, maybe?
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I would be remiss if we removed public health, as it has some great tenants on there. As we know, at a national level, public health is being decimated at an incredible level. We're getting rid of measles shots and COVID, and if we don't do it on this level, we could be responsible for some major issues. So I am against public health. I think we can redefine the bullets as they show, but no.
Okay. So, just, there's a lot of great things that have been said that don't impinge narrowly on the, what are the top-line items going to be? So I want to summarize this, no, we're not going to forget all that, which is valuable, but I want to summarize the kind of, what I've heard regarding potential ways of changing the six top lines. One is to add a parks and infrastructure category, one is to add an operational excellence category, one is to remove the public health category, perhaps with redistribution of some of its sub-goals into various other categories. And I think also, if I'm paraphrasing Councilmember Davis correctly, also potentially acknowledging that some of those efforts are downstream of things that may need to get addressed first, for instance, in the housing area. And then I heard the suggestion of potentially merging the finance category with an economic development category, and separately, the suggestion of potentially merging the finance category with a new operational excellence category. So I think those are the five things that I've heard so far, and I, I think it's fair to say that there isn't really a ton of coalescing around any of them yet. Happy to just have the conversation continue if folks want, or if someone wants to try to make a motion to do a specific thing and see what the vote is, that seems fine, too. So, and in the, in the moment of novelty, there's no lights on in front of me. At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first or second, well, at this time, no one's requesting to speak for a first time, so we'll go with, for a second opportunity, Councilmember Saffordan.
Thank you. Well, I'll make a motion that we add a category for parks and infrastructure.
Second.
Councilmember Saffordan moves that we add a category for parks and infrastructure. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there, Councilmember Burns, your light was on, is that to discuss this motion, or?
No.
Okay. On that topic, Councilmember Isles.
Does that mean that we'll be moving to seven? Are we comfortable moving to seven? So which one do we draw?
Let me interpret, let me say how I was interpreting the motion. I was interpreting it as a motion to add something to the list, but not adjourn the meeting. So if that motion were to pass, I would then be encouraging us to strike something else or merge to others. I've always felt like six was kind of like a high number. Obviously, I can be overruled on that, but I would say this is just, let's, let's move the working document from six to seven. Is that fair, Councilmember Saffordan?
Yeah, and I mean, if you think about parks and infrastructure, they run through the existing six categories also. I mean, we have infrastructure needs and park needs that need to be financed, they affect public health, there's an economic development component to it. I mean, I, I just think having, when we get towards the final document, having a complete absence of parks and infrastructure is a problem.
Councilmember, so I think I've got Councilmembers Burns and Nusma in the queue for after this motion, after this vote, is that right?
Yeah.
So then, in the queue for this discussion are Hadda Kharis, followed by Davis.
So Councilmember Saffordan, the parks and, would you, are you thinking that this would be parks and infrastructure, and we would, and needing to have, like, a, because we need a facilities plan? And I think this kind of, for me, like, how do we fund this? Would you be comfortable with this being a subtopic in finance? Because I think that's like, one of our biggest challenges is like, you know, our legacy parks have been, like, maintenance has been kicked down, you know, kicked the can down the road for years, and now we're facing a huge backlog. Would you be comf, would you be comfortable with this being a subcategory in finance?
Yeah, or, I mean, Audrey can speak more to what happens at the Parks and Rec Board. Stacy, you did, you're fine. But it's clear we have a list of parks that need work. The way that we've done this in the past is we do one park completely and move it off the list, like, maybe there's a way to look at common design elements, we do all of the paths at every park, you know, I mean, basically, we need to, in my opinion, prioritize how we're going to do this, because we have a very long list that's only going to grow unless we chip away at it. So I think you're right, that a large part of that is finance, but also, like, a large part of it is, and that may come through other things we're working on, deciding what we're keeping in terms, not that we're selling parks, but what we're keeping in terms of equipment, and, yeah, make it clear, I'm not talking about selling parks.
No one's suggesting that.
But, but, you know, rather than approaching them the way that we have, how do we get through this list faster? And I think if we're talking about a goal, and we have a long to-do list, our goal should be to get through as much of it as possible.
Yeah, and I'm in total agreement with that. And I've talked to Manager Stowe about potentially, like, changing the way we bid and plan for our parks updates, because I think, like, we have inherently, with the design and then bid process, there are just so many steps, and it slows us down into getting things done, and also, I think, causes, you know, costs to go up, because it takes us so long, and we have, you know, the, so there's definitely work that we can do on that. So definitely in favor of having it someplace on our top list of goals.
Councilmember, Councilmember Davis, followed by Nusma.
So I just wanted to question what our process is looking like, and I wanted to recommend something. Could we just do all of the top-level categories, and we can just say what we want, and then we can rank top five, and then combine those together? And whatever the top five that we all kind of come up with ends up being our top five or six goals, could we maybe do it that way? We do blind ballots, rank them one to five? Or?
So you're saying, like, create a nomination process, which is maybe the six that we've already done, plus the two that were mentioned, and then have people do a ranked ballot, and then that determines the outcome?
I guess, I guess if it, do we have a set number of, like, how many top-level goals we're trying to do? Is it six?
I mean, my view, which I think is shared by staff, but again, we're, like, we're not, this is an opinion that could be overruled, is that six is, like, as many as you can have without it starting to be not priorities, but just a list of everything you care about? So I think the goal would be, in my opinion, the goal should be six or fewer. And yeah, I'm not wedded to this process we're having here. If folks want to do something like what you described, that's fine as well. I think the reason I initially went with this process is that I do think where, we started with a document that's pretty close to where we're going to land, so taking it and then just making some changes one at a time felt reasonable, but I don't, I'm not attached to that, if you want to do it a different way.
I really just meant for the big-level items, I assume that we're going to maintain most of these, and then the next discussion will be us going into each one, and then taking out or adding or revising the actual sub-bullets.
So the, what I want to leave today with is a decision about the high-level ones, and then hand that to staff, ask them to do some work, come back with options for the sub-items. I think that's, that I'm relatively attached to. I think, I think for us to start discussing the sub-items without both some prep time on our part and a list of options that are realistic, given to us by staff, I think is a recipe for a not super productive conversation. But how we get to the high-level items, I'm sort of open to anything.
Okay. I guess it just depends on if we end up with a bunch of categories, which maybe won't happen, so.
I just want to offer that we, as staff, if, we would also appreciate direction, like, we like this new category, and we want to fit these other things under it, that I wouldn't categorize as some of the bullets. So the way that you want to combine them and give direction to staff, that would also be really helpful. So if you're like, okay, I want to take finance and put it under operational excellence, that, that would be good information for us to have.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we're talking about now is Councilmember Saffordan's motion to add parks and infrastructure. I'm going to support that. You know, I think making that an explicit, both of those an explicit city council goal raises the visibility of an issue that has been and continues to be important. So I think that it makes sense to elevate So I think that it makes sense to elevate that to the level of these top level priorities. More to say on how to recombine some stuff when we get to that point.
Councilmember Rogers.
I'd agree with that. I support having something for infrastructure and parks being a top level category. I also think that as we move into the subcategories, we kind of need to look at making like true smart goals. I don't know if anybody's ever worked in that category before, but I mean, some of these are great ideas, but there's not really anything behind the bullet points. So I think that's something that, as we move into this process further, I'm kind of straying a little bit from the, from the item there, but I think that if we get the top level items in place, then some of these may fall away as well.
All right. So I'm going to call the rule on the motion to add parks and infrastructure as an item. Councilmember Isles.
Yes.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
With nine in favor and none against, the motion carries and parks and infrastructure have been added in, now Councilmember Burns.
I hope for now, I want to see where we're going with this next, because I actually wanted, I thought we were going into the bullets today, so if we're not, yeah, I hope for now.
Councilor Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with regards to the operational excellence concept, I think it makes sense to combine that one with finance. I don't think it makes sense to combine finance with economic development, so I'm crossing that idea off the list. I was just brainstorming out loud. So I'm going to make a motion to have a category, operational excellence and finance. And add that to the list of priorities. If we end with a second, maybe we can have some robust discussion.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves to add, to replace the finance item with operational excellence and finance. Is that correct? Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion on, is there any robust discussion on this?
Council, City Manager Stowe.
And just a clarification, whether we want to say operational performance, or, I'm sorry, I was thinking of organizational performance might be the best term, but open to suggestions.
I don't know if we need to wordsmith from the dais, but organizational excellence, organizational performance captures the intent as well.
So we're just, you're revising your motion to say organizational performance?
I have, I don't have strong preference. I think the underlying idea is the same.
Yeah, I don't care either. I just recommend that we pick one and work with it for now.
I'll go with whatever the city manager recommends.
Okay. Organizational performance, it appears to be. Councilmember Sufferden, followed by Rogers.
Okay. We would nest that under finance? Is that?
Well, we would, there would be a new category, organizational performance and finance.
Okay, good. I mean, because some of the issues that I assume would be captured there aren't a lack of financial resources, it's acceptable standards and things like that. So, okay. So we're, finance becomes finance and organizational performance. All right, cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Rogers.
I talked with Councilmember Nusma about this a little bit today, but as I'm kind of sitting and thinking about it, I'm wondering if this is something that we charge the city manager with doing, and it's not our goal, but one of his goals, in creating the operational issues that we experience from time to time as an organization and having those cleared up. And it's something maybe that makes more sense for us to have the city manager set a goal, since we've established a policy where we'll be doing kind of a rolling evaluation process with the city manager. Just an idea, throwing it out there.
I think it's a yes and.
Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, maybe, listen, if you could go over what we would discuss, it does feel, maybe I missed it, but it feels forced now, but maybe after you explain what would be involved with this, I would better understand where you're coming from.
Yeah. What I want with the City of Evanston operation is an efficient and well-run and responsive and professional organization, where I'm not getting calls like, hey, what's going on with my building permit? Or, hey, I submitted this 3-1-1 request and it's taken forever and, you know, and what's going on? So the, you know, quotidian, day-to-day operational stuff, which is the city manager's responsibility, of course, I think often, or at least in the previous set of goals, has gotten overlooked. It's not something that the city council was explicitly paying attention to. And I think we probably have suffered from a lack of council attention to the day-to-day operations of the city. And so I, to Councilmember Rogers' point, I think turning that, yeah, high-level goal into an actionable kind of set of subgoals and, you know, driving down beyond that to give the city manager explicit guidance, I think that is something we should do in any case. But putting operational excellence, organizational, what are we calling it? Performance on a high level kind of helps keep our attention on this very important kind of fundamental service of government at the council level.
I certainly not, wouldn't want to replace public health with that. I do agree with Councilmember Rogers. Honestly, I just think that should be the default of any city manager is, should be trying to achieve that. And I think if we can use the process that Councilmember Rogers said to better understand how he aims to achieve that, that's a better place to put this. Again, I don't think the categories matter as much as the bullet points underneath them, and so, fine, but I certainly would not want to replace public health with that.
Councilmember Rogers.
I mean, I would just say that in light of conversations we've been having with our rules about what is the role of council interacting with staff and overseeing staff and everything, I really feel more comfortable making this one of the city manager's goals as we goal-set with him and making sure that we continue to maintain that firewall so that if we're seeing problems and we're, as council members, we don't feel tempted to step in and say, we have a city council goal to address this, so we're going to get into it. As opposed to having the city manager report back to us on how things are going, helping guide the city manager in overseeing a, an organizational performance goal, just makes a lot more sense to me, I think.
And I do think those organizational performance goals need to be addressed in that manner, but I don't think you're suggesting that the city manager should have a completely separate set of goals from the city council goals. Like, the way I see it, the goals that we give and expectations we set for our city manager should be based on the city council goals. And I think that, you know, operational excellence, organizational performance is something we very explicitly should be paying attention to, therefore should be on the list of high-level city council goals and priorities.
Councilmember Burns.
What would the bullet point be? What would be something actionable that the council, that we would want to see?
Well, I'll jump in even just based on what you said earlier. Average 3-1-1 response time, average time to have certain building permits approved, stuff like that.
Yeah. It could also include employee engagement, it could include some human resources, you know, changes to our human resources, hiring and, you know, recruiting practices, for example.
So I will again step in as acting clerk and take the role on the motion to replace the finance with finance and organizational performance. Councilmember Isles.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Cadiz.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
With seven in favor and two against, the motion carries and finance has been replaced by finance and organizational performance. I've got Councilmember Burns down, but I'm not sure if that's correct.
I'm good.
Sorry, my bad. So at this time, we have no lights and seven items. The, oh, Councilmember Kelly.
Just one, I'd like to add, for affordable housing, I don't know if we could do slash affordability, if that could be a, make that heading include affordability.
What if we just change it to housing affordability?
Okay. I think that can work. I think so. I just want to, to address current residents and issues of affordability for our existing residents. So I think it expands beyond housing also, but, I mean, with water, there's a whole bunch of factors that come into play with regard to affordability in Evanston. So I think housing is most of it, so I'd be amenable to that, but I would prefer that it were just affordability.
So as is my habit, I'm going to push you to make a specific motion.
Well, I guess I would like to see the heading of affordable housing be affordable housing and affordability. As I guess, that's my motion to change that heading.
I'll second.
Councilmember Kelly moves to replace the affordable housing heading with affordable housing and affordability. Councilmember Rogers seconds.
What is it again? Can you say what?
Affordable housing and affordability. I think Councilmember Davis's editor face was saying, why not just affordability, since affordable housing is maybe under that category? Is that, was that a fair read of your editor face?
It just seemed a little repetitive. Yeah.
I'm fine with that, too, so.
All right, so, so just affordability.
Sure. Do you want to amend that proposal or?
I think we just allowed you to amend it with your mind.
Okay. I mean, if that's, is acceptable, I mean, if that's something that Councilmember Rogers and all.
I'll amend my second.
Okay. All right, good enough.
Luke.
Maybe I'm thinking about it in too much of a literal sense, but I think I'm just a little bit concerned about affordability is very broad, right? And so like, obviously, as the city, we can only control so much about affordability, about CPI and groceries and other things like that, right? There's only so much within our purview. Even the property tax bill, only 16% of the property tax bills under our purview, right? So I just worry about affordability being a little bit vague.
Councilmember Rogers, followed by Burns.
Thought I beat you.
He beat me, but.
No, you might got it.
Okay. Could I, could I change this again to maybe housing affordability?
Well, I think Councilmember Kelly said she didn't want that. Is that right?
You know, I said I would be amenable to that if that's more palatable to the majority here. I do believe it expands beyond just housing to things like fees. We have a lot of very high fees in Evanston. And yes, some are out of our control, just like with every single item on here, there are elements of each of these categories that are out of our control. But I would, you know, that would be better to me than as it currently stands to go with housing affordability.
I think, I'm sorry to step in, but I think it includes other things than just, oftentimes when we say affordable housing, we're thinking of IHO-type things. And I think the intent of Councilmember Kelly, if I'm reading it correctly, is to look at people who are already housed and the challenges that they face in the maintaining an affordable, affordable lifestyle in Evanston.
Yeah, and her point is that the aspects of that that don't include the literal cost of rent, mortgage, property taxes are still relevant and wouldn't fall under the housing affordability heading. Is that fair?
That's right. Yeah, that's fine. So I think I would then move to change this to housing affordability.
And I will amend again.
Okay. So we've now have a new motion withdrawn, new motion made by Councilmember Kelly to replace affordable housing with housing affordability, seconded by Councilmember Rogers. Councilmember Burns, are you still in the queue?
I don't, I just don't feel like that gets at it. You were probably right with where you were going initially. I think this is an and thing. I think this is like affordable housing or housing affordability and general affordability. Like, it's not, housing affordability is just that. So I hear what you're saying, and I agree with it. I just don't think we're capturing it here.
Councilmember Nusma.
I, I like the idea of calling it housing affordability. I think that's what I suggested when Councilmember Kelly made the motion, so I'm done with that.
Councilmember Kelly.
So I would say most of the aspects of unaffordability apply to costs incurred with housing, such as water, and though I agree with you on Councilmember Burns that much of it doesn't, but I think most of it does, so I'm fine with.
Yeah, you're good.
But I agree. I mean, I would prefer that it was and, but I'm fine in terms of voting on this to go with housing affordability.
All right. Still acting as clerk, I'm going to take the role. Councilmember Isles.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Cadiz.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
With nine in favor and none against, the motion carries and the affordable housing item will be replaced with housing affordability. It's after 5:20 and we still have seven items, so does anybody have either a recommendation to change the fact that there are seven items or a stirring defense for the idea that there should be seven or more items? Councilmember Burns.
I don't know how stirring it is, but I said it before, six, seven, I still haven't heard anybody say why that matters that much. I think really it's the work that comes out of this, which I think will, to me, it'd be more meaningful, I think we're going to figure that out at the next meeting, like, how to, how much work is going to come out of these general categories? And if we want to manage that, then I think we should, you know, work with staff to do that, but whether it's six or, we could easily just have six and it'd be more work if we don't do the next thing right than if we have seven and do the next thing right. Just, it doesn't really matter that much. So I would, just for the sake of time, I think, you know, we should adopt what we have here, the seven goals, and then, and spend time at the next meeting to make sure that all of this is being managed in a way that's not, you know, overburdening staff and something that's realistic for the new chief.
Councilmember Sufferden.
Is there a way to consolidate public health and safety in a way that doesn't shortchange either of those? I mean, it seems like a lot of that works together. I don't know that it, I mean, I don't, I saw Chief Stewart a second ago, Ike, I don't, I mean, do you feel a short change if public health and safety are combined and an item? I don't want to make you feel bad or make you walk up here for no reason, but. They, sorry, chief, hey. I mean, they're different departments, but they, being healthy and safe is the goal.
Absolutely. Ike Oldwell, Director Health and Human Services Department. Yeah, definitely, there's a way in which we can fuse a number of the strategies that we employ in, in public health and public safety. They kind of go hand in hand, so we can definitely see ways in which those can connect and maybe take some of public health and infuse with public safety or vice versa.
Okay. I mean, would people be all right with that? That gets us back to six. I don't know that it actually matters, but. Yeah, I would that we combine public health and safety.
I'll second.
Councilmember Sufferden moves that public health and public safety are combined. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Councilmember Rogers, do you want to speak to this?
Just briefly, I would suggest that we keep our seven, come up, have staff come up with bullet points and see where things can be merged. And we may winnow it down to five, we may winnow it down to six, because in looking at some of the goals that were established last time, they aren't. I mean, under finance, identify alternative revenue sources. I would hope that our finance department is doing that just as an ongoing practice and not something that we have to direct as a goal. So there may be places where some of these things naturally fall together or fall into separate categories. So rather than taking the time to go through that, let staff do their work, and then when we get bullet points back, look at, are these actual achievable goals? Are they specific goals? And are they not just something you're doing as part of your job?
All right. So I'm going to call the roll, and that will be the end of our discussion, and then and then I'll give some direction to staff, and then we'll adjourn and let, let whoever's next do their thing. So this is a motion to combine public safety and public health. Councilmember Isles.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Can I say, sure.
Is that appropriate?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Cadiz.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Surprisingly to me, with nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and public health and public safety will be merged. I think the point that Councilmember Burns and others have made is a fair one, that the, how you, how you divide the work into categories is less important than what the work is, and so our request to staff is to come back with a list that's concise and clear, and, you know, where the things that are on the list are very explicitly measurable, and, and that they really are limited to a number that it becomes not just a kitchen sink approach, but, hey, here are the really top priorities that we recommend council adopt in each of these areas. Luke?
Mayor, if I can just clarify, and Allison, please jump in here as well, are, is council giving staff, for lack of a better term, like, an open canvas for each of these goals? Or are we trying to work kind of within the confines of this existing document?
I would say the starting point for the work should be the existing document and today's discussion, and obviously, that's not rigid. We all know that the world has changed somewhat in the last year and a half, two years, but I would say I would start with the document and the explicit things that were mentioned tonight by council members. And with that, the June 9 meeting of the city council will recess to allow for some committee meetings, and we'll be back here at 6:30.